I'd like to call this taking orders, first order of business, please.
I believe this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to approve tonight's agenda.
All second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Everybody have a chance to look at their minutes? In corrections? Need a motion to approve then?
Motion to approve.
All second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. To review the claims for September 2022? Anybody got any questions on the claims?
Motion to approve.
All second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. To review the accounts balances of financial statements for the general water sewer fund for September 30th?
Motion to take it to the end to you.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. The next item is to approve a resolution 2022-13 adopting of the delinquent water accounts to be assessed to the property taxes. Or delinquent, is that water accounts or is that just water?
Just water.
Put on the property taxes.
I'll recommend approval of the resolution 2022-13.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. What's the total of those accounts Cheryl? I seem never listed but one's over a thousand. What is that one? Where's the big one is a thousand something dollars, where's that from?
I don't know.
On Highway 11, the one that's...
Three five.
Thirty-five, twenty-four, Highway 11 East.
Yep, that's... Well, that's all right, we approved the back period and apparently our bill, apparently it's been delivered for some time. I didn't know it was the Lou's Nest or whoever it was. Okay, can move the dates to the November council meeting due to the November general election on the second Tuesday?
On what, on Halloween?
So you want to move the third and fourth?
Yeah.
Third and fourth Mondays?
That we're gonna do?
No, the next Tuesday, the next Tuesday.
Okay, move them to, okay.
Just move every day in another week?
Let's see. So you talk in the fifteenth and the twentieth?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I'll make my recommendation that we move the council meeting due to November general election on the second Tuesday.
All second now.
It would be the fifteenth.
Yeah, so we're moving both days, just move it back a week. Okay, we have a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Jen, the liquor store operating statement? Wonderful, I think that might be one of our biggest months again.
That seemed to be going up, so...
Obviously we have that benefit, we also have Pink, well, Pink wasn't a benefit last night.
Yeah, it was a combination.
Combination, probably.
Sorry?
We haven't attracted that much money.
Just our smiling faces.
Must be your sweet smile.
I honestly don't know, it was just a really good September.
What on the cooker for this month?
Um, well, we're gonna have a Halloween party, we got a DJ booked and then...
A DJ?
Yeah. It's a new one now, we're gonna try someone different just for fun, his name's Stefan, he's from town. So we're gonna give him a whirl and see how it goes. He's done a couple weddings around town, I've seen him, so...
Do they have a...
Uh, we're gonna do it Friday, yeah.
Don't they have that walk too where...
The zombie curl?
The zombie curl, is that...
I don't know if they're still doing that because I'm pretty sure they started that for that young girl who passed away. So I don't know if they're gonna do it this year or not.
I haven't heard.
Yeah.
Well, you got a couple events scheduled and I think it's real important if you, as you can see, every time we have some kind of event, we recognize it on the financial statement for sure, so if we can try to find one or two for everyone.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever the occasion is, I think that's been a formula for success here, so...
Yep, and like we'll move into November and we'll do the big buck contest again, that drew in a big crowd and I think it's gonna double this year, so...
Do you make any questions for Jen then? Where you keeping all that money?
In my pockets.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, thank you. Okay, public works update. Bill, bring us up the schedule on what we got going on.
Well, we got that culvert over at Wilbur's tweets fixed.
It is very happy with that.
Yeah, it looks really good.
You know, I don't know if you know this, but I'll tell you again, the cheapest place you can get culverts, you usually go to the county and buy a culvert because they buy them on such large quantities and they don't pay no sales tax or anything, so you can't, can't beat the price. And the county's been really good as far as selling them to the municipalities, so we don't have to inventory them or anything. If we need that size, they're usually pretty good at getting them, so we need a culvert, that's the place to get it. And usually even private people that have to put them in their...
In their own driveway.
Approaches and ask you, you might recommend it, and the county can deal with them if they want. They've been really good with us for that, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
And I worked with Travis Thompson to get that crib back to storage that you guys wanted back there from the Rainier Beach Dock.
Yeah, one thing too, hydrants is getting this time of year now that...
I've done all eighty-nine hydrants.
Question, I see one was in a bag down by Mergman Ossis, what's the deal on that?
I, when I got the sheet for that, it was listed as it leaks, so it's turned off at the valve. And it's turned off at the valve and you can't turn it on. Or will not turn off.
Turn the valve off?
The valve is turned off, it's been turned off since Nick Sears has been here.
So the seed needs replacing?
Yes, probably.
Yeah, those are real easy to do, have you ordered one or...
We have several large ones.
Okay, yeah, those are real simple, so...
Yeah, there's more than one that we have to do.
Okay. What do they have, do they charge us for each one or what do they do?
All they do is for the charges for parts and lighting, but they come up with a three or five dollar one.
I've been fixing potholes in some of the alleys and doing a lot of seasonal water turn offs as the snowbirds are wanting to get out of here and everything and a lot of locates are still coming in.
Question, when you said you shut off the water, you went to delinquent ones. Are those all shut off and not paid or are those some of them?
Probably eleven was the leak.
Which one?
They got a leak.
It was a leak at eleven, I remember that. Explain the leak to me, is it on the city side or there's...
It's there, it's near.
Yeah, well, make sure, is that one of the big building?
Yeah.
Okay. Who's Ben and who's Sarah?
Uh, Mr. Kress.
Hmm?
Mr. Kress.
Go ahead, Bill, sorry.
Okay. I worked with James over here on the Buckhorn project and Adam showed him where he could put it back there in storage so I can just throw it on the, our burn pile as we go when weather permitting.
Did we have room for them all?
Hmm?
Did we have enough room for all the Buckthorn rooms?
Yes, I made a spot for them, so...
There was a lot?
Yeah, I didn't have room right on the existing pile, so... And it was very good work, it was very professionally done.
Question, I have to go over to the lay down area, but Nick, you might be able to... How much room do we have over there for storage yet, the lay down area?
Like for what kind of storage?
Uh, for crushed rock. Is there any...
Not a lot, I have all the fill levels from this project here, still over there.
We can make roads for crushed rock, for good crushed rock.
Yeah.
I'll swing by there and take a look, maybe there's some little bit of work we have to do to make room for some if we want, so... The reason I say that is we ever get together with the railroad or in that meeting and they, and the general contractor or the contractor has offered to give us some of the smallest restaurant we wanted to fill. So if we wanna use it for parking lots or...
We're gonna get a bunch of our hatch deal, those are...
Parking?
If we get a bunch of our hatch deal, those are some back there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, first we gotta see how much room we got and how much, how much we need to...
I don't know if that road can take the pounding from hauling and make loads at all.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said, also we have that road issue, but that's something we have to resolve ahead of time. Uh, from where I understand right now, it may be done late winter where the road froze, so it'd be, or...
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, maybe something that's available or not available.
I know where we can use the crushed rock. Look at here in the parking lot or on that hill there. Over here, and you come around to the side where like we're the old crushed rock. I saw two people the other day, a couple days apart, parked their vehicle on the side over here and stepped on the door and there's a six inch drop from the asphalt down.
Well, Nick, this here, yeah, this here we blasted rocks, so, well, you probably talked about it, some active crushed rocks, so... Any boggles, anybody sees, we should bring, bring the bills attention or Nick's attention, whatever, so that we fix it up.
Yeah, I can smooth that out, I got some crushed rock, some class high, or three quarter blast now.
Yeah, and good crush, crush gravel is good too, so... What else you got, Bill?
Well, I'm gonna start working more on the rake now that it's getting close to that time and I don't wanna be caught with my...
Is there, has anybody looked at our wood supply, do we have some?
I, I have lots of wood back there right now.
Firewood?
Yeah, I've been getting it donated from Myz Best Logging for the past two years. And, uh... Just made, we need to find a garage for our work truck that has the plow on it, a heated garage.
See, we need a truck for our, a garage for our plow truck?
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna need some, because whenever we go plow for four or five, six hours, put that thing through in the alleys and we're all going with it, you know, it's like when you plow it down long, you pack it full of salt, next morning you're moving it in the womb and have your dog out somewhere, or we're gonna wreck that truck otherwise.
Let me work on that, I may, may have a storage, I may have some storage space.
Yeah, that's not gonna be an everyday deal, it's just after a big snowstorm, or someone has to run in and let it grip off and...
Remind me, I'll check and see what we have for storage.
If we can't find storage, we should probably wait to use the plow this year.
Oh, I will, but we're not putting on there unless we find some with the dog, we're gonna wreck it.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll, I'll check that, I'll see if I have some space available. I know we're not gonna be doing some, some of the activities we normally do in the winter, so there may be some space when we have room for pickup.
Yeah, like I said, it's summer days, it's gonna be our kind of big storms.
Okay. Is that it, Bill?
Yeah.
Good, I'll let you write it down. Uh, probably our last nice date today, so it's a little bit of a mood spell. Again, one, one thing with all the leaves falling, just watch and catch bases, make sure they're cleaned off because otherwise you get that rain on top and then it freezes them, leaves and you got covers that are full solid and...
Johnson says in a way by this, saying this next people that sweep her. Jack Johnson is gonna come by with the county speaker next week.
Right, on, on the county road, but we must have a, a, anything that may...
Basically, the county roads are the only ones with catch bases, so county poison, or forty percent, so...
Okay, Andy, again, I think, does he have anything, did the FEMA work with him at all or...
I've got that coming.
Okay, you have to get that to work with the FEMA because they're here, but he getting calls and things like that, so... Okay, we'll get that next thing, so, all right, thanks, any more questions for Bill? Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
James. Okay, to set a, next order of business, importantly, set a date for the alley vacation area.
Buckthorn, Buckdo, we have the update, did you get the update?
Yeah. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the one from the... Buck, Buckhorn Project update, um, who has, James?
Um, James, he was the one that ran the project, I showed up for two days, worked a lot of hours to help with some of the group and worked with the crew, that was awesome. Um, do you mind coming up to strike? We had, per James, we had a very positive reception to the people that signed up and the reason I asked Bill to get the Buckthorn back there was because we removed so much of it, I mean, it was just, I couldn't believe how much Buckthorn we pulled out every year, so it was, but it was awesome. And the guys that came up here and worked were great, professional and hardworking as well.
Has it been pretty much eradicated then? I mean, it's something that probably comes back for it all.
Yeah.
We got a bunch of it, but there's still, is it two, three year project?
Yeah, you're just, you know, based on what we saw, um, the size of the trees, it's probably been developing for sixty years. So we're not gonna get rid of it in four days, so...
But we got a lot of the big berry producing trees cut.
Yes, yeah, so that was, uh, the priority with the time available was getting rid of the, yeah, the female plants that produce berries and then you're getting, uh, you're getting ahead of that seed crop.
So, um, so that's an ongoing project, is it done every year at this time?
Well, this was a pilot, so we wanted to see how it, how it worked, you know, um, how receptive the private landowners would be to working and with us and, yeah, I thought it was really good, I got tons of good feedback, people were really happy with how it looked afterwards. We did this strip out here, I don't know, I have, I have a lot of before and after pictures and I think people were shocked at how much was in there. When you, when you just look at the woods, it just looks like the woods, but when you go in there and you start picking apart, you know, this species and that species and you start taking the Buckthorn out.
Well, it sounds like it's probably an ongoing project, it should be doing, done annually, and so I, I think I...
Yeah, and that's...
Lead on this, and Jen, you were there.
I mean, if we can do something like this again, I'm pretty sure in the city we're gonna be trying to do like kind of rough and bad, we did this year, you know, in the future, and again, just continue to do education for people. Because again, some of the people that we talked to were like, why don't we have any of that on my property? And then James went spoke to them and pointed out that basically like, you know, some lots had thirty, forty, fifty percent, that's what some in a wooded property did, crowded all the native species out and it was, I mean, it was ivory for me to see, because I didn't advise this to them, so...
And that's, the, the project was fifty percent getting rid of Buckthorn and fifty percent education. Because I just think, you know, what better way to educate, you know, how to identify it then and then control it than going out on a property and showing the landowner directly, you know, here's, here, here's it, here's how to get rid of it, so...
Well, it's something that's been real successful as far as input I get from YouTube anyway, and that, so, uh, I'd like to see if the city can continue this some way and obviously if there's a housing programs and program out there, please bring it to us and I don't think we'll have too much trouble.
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to pursue funding for stuff like that and, and keep working on it, so...
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you again.
Even an expanded version, would be nice to put out in other areas of Rainier.
Yep, yeah, and that's, we had, so we utilized a grant through my office and we had, you know, about five thousand dollars remaining. Um, you guys agreed to do the, that match, so then I contacted the conservation corp and that's, we had time for a week with that crew.
Is that grant gonna be like available in the coming years?
Yeah, I did, I was successful last winter, we'll have to see what, you know, we're a county agency, so putting all the resources in Rainier, you know, might not be an every year thing, but there are other funding opportunities that we could look at, so...
And really appreciate if you can advise to them because like we're doing our budget, of course, and something that we, an item we can put in a line item for things like that, but obviously there's matches out there that you know about, it's easy to...
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a lot of funding.
Nice for us to get in our budget, we're pretty budget, we're budget conscious, you know, and so...
No, I was happy to do it, so...
Thank you, very... Thank you, very. The next, they set the date for the alley vacation for November fourteenth? I don't interfere now with any, no, the second Tuesday, I like it, so...
That's on Monday.
It's a Monday.
The fourteenth, yeah, does that work for everybody?
Now, who's agreed to come to that, just a representative then?
Why, the cabinet, even, well, the somebody person that's contacted me is the, is the surveyor.
But it has to be representative of the person that's requesting a vacation, doesn't it?
Of the Wisconsin Superior.
Somebody from there has to be there, yes, and I don't know if they've appointed him to be sure person or...
I think it'd be advisable to say that we are considering, we got a tentative hearing set up, but till that date, please refrain from doing any, being that there's so much construction on this, advise your subcontractors and everybody that this alley is still city property and be advised not to do any corrective action or any, take any actions on this alley, on this alleyway until we had our chance to, for our meeting. And you know, members of KTM come in here with me, he didn't know there was a vacant alley and it ain't a vacant alley, it's prior, it's still the city alley and he didn't know that, he's, he's one with the blasting contract, well, we don't know if blowing up the alley until they either have permission to do it or, or we've made some arrangements with it, so I think we should send them a letter telling them what the date of alley is, the building we're bringing, any construction activity down on it.
What alley are you referring to, Bill?
Uh, it's a continuation of shelter that goes almost to the point. There's a, there's a twenty foot alleyway continue on that, the state still owns, the railroad is asking for a vacation of it now.
It's basically a developed, this is...
Yeah, this is all right.
They want this prior, yeah, and they want this.
And I, I think, I think, I think at that hearing, I said we do a local land swap.
This is all, yeah, that's right there.
I think we could consider a land swap for that.
What I'm getting, what I'm getting...
How do I do the...
This to...
Right, yeah. Good luck, that's my question, that was, make sure...
We're going to do this, man.
Cheryl, it is, is it... I think it is important that you send that letter that's saying that until we have this meeting for vacation of that alley and no construction activities or anything takes place on that alleyway and this without city authorization. And then tell them we're having a meeting on the fourteenth.
That's the one, it's, so it's not gonna continue the rest of the alley? Alley that they want to vacate is not going to include an alley that goes by, for example...
The grill?
Going by the grill.
No, that's not what they're talking about.
They want the peacedes from the end, I, I believe from preliminary drawings, I see that they're gonna be putting, that's where that customs house and things like that are going in, it's just in the middle of their whole operation, so...
Are they gonna offer to buy it or...
I, I would, I would just like to publicly say, I know this will be discussed at the meeting, but being that this is what we're talking about now is that if they're wanting this, I'm certainly inclined to ask for something in return and, uh, and going to continue to circle back around to what I perceive as a trespass and disruption of city property down the seven blocks and I would never hand over something to a company that refuses to promise us anything more than against you all, three to one. I want more...
Absolutely.
Solid promises and language contract, whatever it is that we need as a city, I would never consider making their lives any easier until I, us as a council of the city get some kind of promise of reparations or something for what happened down there, so...
Again, Jen, that's the reason we want to send that letter, right, just mentioned, Cheryl, make sure there's no action on that till they attend the meeting and if they don't attend the meeting, obviously nothing's gonna happen to that alleyway and then we can make our move going in. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Cheryl, we can't sell the alleyways, but we probably could propose a land swap or something like that. We probably have to look into what we can and can't do, if we choose to vacate it, I don't think you can sell it, but I think you can do a land swap, I, I believe. But again, we, we'll, we'll, we'll do a little more research before the fourth, the fourteenth on that. But if we send that letter, they know that without supposed to blast it, nothing with it.
Just a point.
Okay, um, a few update?
Um, the site inspectors were here on the fourth and, um, Nick and the mayor went around, Nick went around, the mayor met them a little bit. They went to every site, they were pretty much here all day.
Yeah.
And then they bring their information back to the project manager, ideally on the thirteenth, so we're just rolling along with what we need to do and executing some estimates for Dr. here and...
We have five or six major points that we're trying to collect from FEMA, some, some reimbursement of monetary values and different things, so... Till we see, we're in the process right now of collecting estimates and assessing, we've assessed the damage and just trying to get costs associated and, and the crux of the meeting is make sure we have documentations, quotes, if we do demo anything or anything, gotta have tickets that we took into a certified land, well, things like that, so they went over how, how we process and Cheryl was up on top of that real good on what and how we have to do it and they were pretty impressed with the pictures that we had ahead of time and maps that we had and, and everything, so we actually made their life pretty easy, uh, as far as the claims availability. One of our, our biggest claims, I think, is what we're trying to collect for our pumping of the sewage or pumping of that, uh, all that excess water, which could be twenty-five, thirty thousand bucks and we're pursuing that, a couple different angles, so... And then, of course, the dogs are hundreds of thousands of dollars, so, there, there are complaints, so we'll, we're, we're working on them weekly, so... And they agreed to, had agreed, but they, they assessed that one, one street about two hundred and fifty feet of alleyway or not alleyway, right in the street and, and they asked the gravel underneath the blacktop and everything, so I secured a quote from that today to replace it, that's the Lou Street, basically, about two hundred and fifty feet, the Lou Street, and I got a quote for that, so we'll see how that process results and keep everybody posted, once it does, then there'll be a construction schedule and stuff like that, but a little early yet. But it is, it is happening. Okay, update on the Lou Street boat ramp project, and the SEN projects in the area, uh, again, I think we jump into that. I think a lot of people have, or some people have been notified of the, since we passed the, uh, blasting ordinance, uh, I think a lot of people have been notified in the blasting area. I think everybody has been notified that, that a lie that is in the blast area or the, what you call the pre-blast survey area. And there's a timeframe attached to them and that, I don't know the particulars, but that progressed, so people have been notified as far as the blasting goes, uh, we still have not, any update in the...
Yeah, it's, it's supposed to start this week.
Uh, as far as the drilling, the blasting, has the SEN replied anything about, um, looking for a hauler because...
Just that last letter they sent.
You sent the letter, but they haven't replied to it.
It's the last one that we got.
And...
That talks about the blasting. So moved to a hauler.
Refresh me on that, Cheryl, maybe I didn't see it, it just...
It talked, gave the blasting schedule and she didn't really say much about the hauler.
Okay, well, that's, well, that's, that's one thing we have to discuss and again, you know, we'll just, we'll have to go to him, but, uh, now that the blasting is started before they remove any of that material that it designated hauler, it has to be passed and, and again, stress that our streets are by ton. And that we have to... And that we have to have a designated hauler determined.
Like it's on subcontractors to know this?
Something like the last, I said something like that.
Subcontractors.
Not that someone down there told you.
Well, that's what I know about the, the Lou, their Bo Graham. And the Bo Graham project, any luck with Vic's crane service?
Yeah, I need to send a letter to Brau Intertek, that's who I was sending it to. Then I've got the contacts. The engineer from SEH was here last week, the same day that FEMA was here. And actually, two engineers were here. There's one that's kind of taken over the project since Jared was on medical leave.
You mean for, for WISN, WISN?
Yeah, WSN, SEH. And he was going, going to put out payout number two. Um, there's a couple little things left. The, you know, the erosion material has to stay up until the...
Seventy percent.
Seventy percent.
Seventy percent of the grass catch.
Grass, and there were, there were some striping that needed to be done down Lou Street that wasn't finished because the cranes were there and so he, but he's, he's the one that's taken over for several of the projects and will put out the second payout.
Can he, we also mentioned, I don't know if Phil, but he was supposed to contact LNL and see if they wanted to replace that.
They, they don't want to work on it.
They don't want, they don't want to work, so I think at that point, Nick, maybe you can call somebody. Actually, contractually, they have to do it.
Right.
Contractually, they have to do it because if we can't agree on a price for them to do it, then they have to do it under time material. You know, a KTM basis, whatever, whatever it has to do and if you refuse to do it, but...
But Brau Intertek has to get it done. LNL doesn't have to do it.
Yeah. But no sense arguing with LNL. If they don't want to do it, that's fine, but you probably can, if you're going to talk to Dave Hurd about the docs or anything like that, he does concrete work. I think who else? KGM does concrete work. They're doing concrete work right now on Second Avenue East. But again, again, that is kind of what Brau should do. But if you've got a couple quotes to replace it, they, their insurance company, they will probably go ahead and get it done.
Do we need quotes for it?
I'm sure we're going to need a couple quotes because it's just like automobile wrecking. Somebody breaks up, you're going to need estimate. But I would ask a couple guys, you know, if you can think of whoever does concrete work.
Okay.
I know up north and I don't know if there'll be enough time yet this year, but if they can do it, that's fine. Go ahead, Jess.
I have a, I have a question. In, in going forward with working with the CN and all their contractors and subcontractors, is their expectation as a company, every time you run into damage or trespass or anything, is that on us to chase after these contractors and subcontractors to find a remedy for this? Or is this something that we can deliver to the CN and put on them?
Well, the remedy is that we contract them. We contact them until they've done something wrong. We have to put them on notice. If they've done something wrong, whether it's a trespass or they broke our concrete or whatever, and we can notify their insurance, that's probably all the obligation we, our, our... We've got to make them notify that they did something wrong. That's probably all we should do or have to do. But at the same time, if we can say we know of a guy that'll take care of it, it's just, you know, when you have your car wreck, how many people don't go get an estimate themselves? Now, you can tell the insurance company, you get a wreck, we'll take it somewhere and that, they have to do it. But at the same time, I don't think it's a big deal to line them up because the first question I would do is, who's in the area that does it? You know, if I was the owner of the contracting company, can you go get an estimate? Do you know who does it and give me his number? And again, if you happen to talk to him. But you're right, we shouldn't be chasing and spending any time or money chasing it. But if it isn't a big deal to get an estimate, I would get it so you have it handled. Two things, one, we know the value of the damage. And I don't want somebody else, because a rural company is saying, oh, here's three little oak trees and then, you know, the five hundred dollars. Well, we got a fifty thousand dollar damage or whatever that number is, you know what I mean? So, it's kind of, we got to do a little due diligence ourselves by, you know, so. That's it. I, I understand where you're coming from, wasting a whole bunch of time chasing it. But unfortunately, I think we have to protect ourselves. Okay.
Nick, were you going to say something?
I can't.
Oh, no, I thought you were going to say something.
What was I going to say?
Whatever.
Well, right now, then it's open forum if we have...
I'll be, I'll be back next Monday full time.
Awesome.
I'm here. A lot of, a lot of, a lot of it will be in here helping Cheryl with a lot of the stuff right now. And then once I get a little more movement, I'll be able to get back outside. Still, I work my way outside and helping Cheryl table out her backlog.
Awesome. Just for the open forum part, I would actually like to know between Cheryl, Bill or even you, Nick, has there been a discussion with the CN or nuclear contractors? What type of, like, what is the legality of them using Seven Oaks Park to back their equipment back into their space? Because right now, they're using our park as just like a throwaway for their generators or whatever it is that they've got going over there. And they're sitting on the CN's property, but to get them there, they have to go over the cities. And have they asked us? Are they required to ask us? I don't know what the conditions are, but I do have a problem with them cutting those trees down and then continuing to use that as their own personal work platform before they can do all this without giving us the courtesy of asking us if that's okay? Because there, I mean, there's grass planted down there, there's all this stuff going in with the bolt launch and, I mean, it's just going to be a trash hole for as long as they continue to use it as their own personal work platform.
Well, Jen, to answer that question, I think it's imperative that we meet with the CN and Stacy that we have to get it laid out on this access, ingress and egress. That the city is not, we have weight restrictions, we have requirements.
I mean, if I sit them down there for a long time, can I walk down there and tell them they're not allowed to do that? If they're trying to back something into their property, can I tell them they're not allowed to do that? If I'm down there witnessing it, like, that's what I would like to know. Because I feel like we're in a position right now where it's really hard to get Stacy and whoever else to the table. I'm fine going down there and telling them, no, find another way until you can come to the table and, and work something on it, as.
I think the words you want to put in there in, in, in that would say, listen, we, we're not trying to stop your project, but we're trying to get an ingress, egress conversation going with Stacy and the CN. And until that conversation takes place, so that we understand how you're going to do it and our requirements and what we expect you to do and what thing, until we have that meeting, then stop. And say, you can come. We'll probably let you go there depending on what you want to do, when you want to do, but we have to have this conversation or we'll end up in the same thing with that trespass. I mean, they just do it and then ask for forgiveness, you know? Oh, I, I put a rock, we'll put some black dirt back in or things like that. I don't know why they won't communicate. It's just, it... Just bother to say hello. John, I see your hand up.
Um, yeah, I have, no, I have some concerns as Jennifer, but how, how, I thought they're supposed to, are they supposed to signal before they do a shot of the blast?
Yeah, oh, yeah, they're supposed to know.
Are they getting behind the...
You'll hear a horn and you'll hear that. Well, I don't know if you will, but they better get you a vibrator.
No, but they, I don't think they're... I can see. They're supposed to start at ten o'clock this morning.
I thought it was Monday that they were starting.
They were going to start blasting today with the weather and stuff, yeah. They were going to do it, building yesterday, they'll restart blasting today.
But so when are they going to start blasting? Are we going to know?
Yeah, John, what they do is they give you, like, for example, they'll give you a five hundred foot notification and then the notification area for like the pre-blast survey is say five hundred feet, but the notification area will be a thousand. So, or whatever that numbers are, throw them numbers out there.
Why didn't they say that? Why didn't they give you the...
They, they, they normally do.
It was like a percentage.
I didn't see no matter, but normally they do, they'll come and inspect and they say the pre-blast survey is good for six, I think it says six hundred and fifty feet or six hundred and fifty. But the notification is usually double that.
Yeah, you know all regulations.
But that's usually what they...
You told us that the guy that came there, our outside was six hundred feet.
No, 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 I'm talking about the schedule. When are they going to do this? I mean, we heard like, hey, today, I figured that at five thirty, I don't know what that was.
Again, John, I, I don't know what they did or what they, what they notified anybody, you know, so.
So, there's going to be a horn, a horn sound.
You know, all I know is in the blasting that we've been involved in, they notify people, they stop traffic. You've had the war, you forget. And there's been horn, like at the pit, they always sound the horn in the pit. I, I, I don't know the answer, but they should be some notification, yeah, right. So, again, again, that's, again, that's just simple with the communication. If they just talk to us and say, okay, we're going to have a five thirty blast and, you know, then everyone's kind of expecting the time and then you listen for it, you know? But again, there's no...
I'm probably do, you know, what they're trying to say here, what they've got to say to them.
I'm going to try to call Stacy tomorrow and say, Stacy, you got to keep this line of communication. Now we know they're drilling, now they're blasting. Does that make sure that we're notified when they're going to set the charge off and things like that?
So, you guys got a letter? You guys get a letter on your door from the blasting people?
We, we got, yes. I noticed that he wanted to schedule an appointment. He came over and did the review inside and outside. He told us, I took a picture of the map that he had there.
He didn't tell you that there would be a horn or that there would be?
Yes, you said there would be a horn.
Okay, okay.
Okay, he, he, they're very reputable. I know this, this is SX Blasting and you know the law. They're very reputable firm in that, so. Again, I, I think whatever they tell you, been my experience that they follow through with everything that we've had. We didn't have any issues, you know, to speak of it, so.
And I, I just have one thing. Just wanted to let you guys all know that our friend in neighborhood bear is also starting making his rounds. So, he's hit our garbage can two weeks in a row now, so he's on path. So, we've had to put our garbage can in our garage now until Friday and then I go out when I get the garbage man come down the road. Otherwise, if I put it out soon, he gets into it because he's sitting and waiting. So, just beware of that.
Who want to break down our deck with the acting right in the window, putting those right in our window?
We got a, we got a light.
We bought a hundred, bought a hundred platters.
Like a red Jen's cat. So, could I ask again, when it is that the landscaping stuff is going to be taken down? Will that be before the snow or after?
What the MPCA, the MPCA is seventy, when it's seventy percent of a grass catch, if they remove it prior to that, they're supposed to be maintaining it full all this time too. But if seventy percent grass catch, then they can take it down. I mean, we had to go put new stuff up out of the hall.
So, it's stick for a while.
Hotels, because the hotel took it down. MPC, somebody called the MPCA right away, come up and said, oh, it ain't seventy percent, so we had to call.
The thing is, I mean, it's possible with the snow this week, so I was wondering.
I would think, I would think it should be able to get down before snow, but I can't, I can't see that.
It'll be a while in the spring.
Probably, I'm sure.
All, all of those, whatever.
Is there anything else?
Anything you don't mention.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
On paper?
Aye.